Seven o'clock. I will call the meeting of the Select Board of Tuesday, March 18th, 2025 to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time.
I'm Karen.
Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line, 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 897-1229-3538, and the password is all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. We have Mary Jane Masstrangelo, Peter Meyer, and Anne Marie Saronian here on the board in person. Gina Zerovich is on Zoom, and Melissa Ferretti is going to be on Zoom tonight. She was here, but she had some audio difficulties, so she'll probably log in a bit. We shall begin with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and our public safety personnel. I would also like to recognize three very distinguished Bourne residents who have passed away recently. One is Rocky Anderson, the other is Bob Parity, and the third is Tom Caher. And for our salute to the flag tonight, we welcome Boy Scout Troops 2044 and 144, if you want to come forward and lead us in the pledge. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Kristin Evangelista Adams. I am with Troop 144, which Bourne is fortunate enough to have a female Boy Scout troop here in town.
I'm the SPL of Troop 44, here leading the boys' troop.
Thank you.
I'm Lily Adams, SPL of 144, for the girls' troop.
I'm Devon Davis. I'm the scout master for Troop 144, our girls' troop, and committee member for the boys' Troop 44.
Awesome. Mikey and Lily, can you get us started, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is reading of the Select Board vision and mission statements. Someone like to read the vision?
Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
The mission?
Sure. Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Next is community shout-out and recognition. I'd like to recognize the Bourne High School girls and boys' basketball teams for really awesome seasons this year. They both made it to the Final Four and unfortunately lost their games, but they had a great season all around, so congratulations to them.
Couple shout-outs. One is from the school, the school board itself. I can say that, subject to some final edits, the Strategic Planning Committee has finished their work as a group, and they will be presented to the Bourne School Committee at some future date. Emily's on board, but I don't know what that date is.
April 6.
Thank you. Anne Marie served with me on this committee, and everybody did a great job, you know, throughout that whole process. It was definitely an learning experience for all. And on a different note, as MJ said earlier, we have lost three pillars to the community, but two of them I want to talk to you about tonight, Robert Parity and Tom Caher, two people whose imprints are all over this community for what they advocated for and what they did, you know, as selectmen, the last, you know, full-time selectman, town moderator for 18 years. He was on the planning board first way back in the early '70s. And then with Tom Caher, you know, being a state representative and being the transportation bureau for, you know, the flyover issue, and also with the CCRTA, I mean, and that's just a scratch to the surface. The Bourne Rail Trail, Tom Caher's been advocating for and helping us for many, for many years now. And so, you know, to the fact that both of these people gave their lives to make this place a better place, it's sad to see them both go, but they will definitely leave an imprint on the community and in the region that is second to none, and hopefully, in the next generation will follow in their footsteps. And I personally wouldn't be where I am today without Bob Parity, for sure. Bob, he was my mentor, and I spent many a days at the dining room table or on the telephone through my almost 30 years in municipal government in various capacities, and without him, I'm not here today. So it's hard, but it's nice knowing that I can reflect and say that both of them were very influential to me, but also to the community at large.
Thank you. All right, next is public comments on non-agenda items. Did you sign up for public comment?
Oh.
Oh, Gene.
Go ahead, Gene.
Sorry, yeah. While acknowledging losses, we did suffer this week. I'd like to give a shout-out to a Centerville resident that is fondly referred to in my family as Uncle Freeman. Freeman Johnson was only 19 years old when he was in the bunk, in his bunk, on the USS St. Louis Mord at the naval base at Pearl Harbor. At 8:00 AM on December 7th, 1941, approached Freeman heard gunfire. He ran to his crew post as fireman in the boiler room. He did his job that day until the lucky Lou made it out safely. He never saw anything but the boiler that day. He just did what he was told. So it's my honor to know that possibly the last Pearl Harbor vet surviving in Massachusetts and possibly the oldest surviving Pearl Harbor vet left in the world has celebrated his birthday on March 11th. So a happy belated birthday, and congrats to Freeman for making it to 105,000 years old.
Wow. Thank you. Okay, so now we go to public comments on non-agenda items. I think Kristin, you signed up? Thank you. So I have to make my spiel. Public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are not, are unable to respond due to posturing requirements of the open meeting law, so you may speak to us, but we may not respond. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Introduce yourself.
Excuse me again, I'm Kristin Evangelista Adams. I am with Bourne Boy Scout Troop 144, and I'm here to ask the board and members of the community to spend some time thinking about solutions that we can bring to the Barlow's Landing crosswalk in front of the Pocasset Community Building. Unfortunately, several weeks ago, one of our scouts was actually hit by a car while crossing the street. He's fine. He's come back and is resuming scout activities, but it was the low lighting within the crosswalk and his darker color clothing that attributed to the incident. So we would like to ask if members of the community in the town could consider some possible solutions for the lighting there, possible crosswalk signs, and maybe even some additional speed enforcement in that particular area at random times. I know there were some vehicles that even with first responders there that night flew by, which is dangerous for our police and firefighters. So with respect, and from Troops 44 and 144, we appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is anyone else for a public comment on non-agenda? Okay, moving right along, consent agenda. We have several items on our consent agenda this evening. A, Cape Cod Canal Regional Chamber use of Buzzards Bay Park for their annual canal concert series on Thursdays from July 3rd to August 28th, 2025, a renewal with a one-day entertainment license for local bands during each event. B, Girl Scout Troop 82145 use of community building parking lot for a Girl Scout cookie drive through on March 30th, 2025, also a renewal. VHS class of 2028 use of Fire Station 3 Sagamore and Fire Station 4 Pocasset for a car wash on May 3rd, 2025. The rain date is May 4th, 2025, also a renewal. Friends of the Bourne Council on Aging Food Prantry use of community building for a psychic fair and craft show on April 26th, 2025, as conditioned by departments, also a renewal. Lyons District 33S use of Buzzards Bay Park for Seaside Walk Fest on September 27th, 2025, rain date September 28th, 2025, also a renewal with a one-day entertainment license for three live bands performing under the gazebo throughout the event. And F, renewal of seasonal licenses for Betty Ann's Dairy Freeze, Katama Like Mini Golf, Jarvis Inc., Lazy Sunday's Cream, Seafood Shanty, and Somerset Creamery Inc. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Due to Zoom participation, this is a roll call vote. So Gene?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes. Apologies, got my audio working.
Okay, thank you. We let everyone know. Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Mary Jane votes yes. 5-0-0, consent agenda is approved. Next is licensing and events for licensing. We have South Shore Golf Carts LLC, 111 Cranberry Highway Sagamore, request to amend Class 1 motor vehicle dealer license, change of authorized manufacturer. Is there someone here from South Shore Golf Carts? Okay. Any questions from the board, public? Everything's in order? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve licensure for South Shore Golf Carts LLC to amend their Class 1 motor vehicle dealer license, change of authorized manufacturer as presented.
On the condition of holding the issuance of the license until sign-off from Building and Planning Department.
Thank you.
We have very organized action. Okay, so motion by Anne Marie, and there's a second by Peter.
I missed the condition.
Yeah.
Where was it?
Get into our packet, page 15. Page 15. Okay, so a motion by Anne Marie, second by Peter. It's in the conditions. So it says proposed Select Board action at the bottom. Yeah, on the condition of building issuance license.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, just looks a little different.
Okay. I would say a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? So it's a roll call vote. Gene?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, 5-0-0. New events. Canal Region Farmers Market use of Buzzards Bay Park, complementing the Canal Concert Series on Thursdays from June 26th to August 28th, 2025. So welcome, please come and introduce yourself at the podium.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Viva, the Executive Director of the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. I'm also the Director of the Lemonade Company, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and responsible for the Mashpee Farmers Market. I'm here today to talk to you about the Canal Region Farmers Market. We had a great year last year. We brought about $1.5 million of economic development to the town of Mashpee, where we've teamed up with the Canal Region Chamber of Commerce. We brought 30 new members last year. Anyone that participates with us becomes a member of the Chamber of Commerce. We're addressing environmental justice here in the town of Bourne, and we also offer SNAP benefits at our farmers' markets. We are the ones that are bringing produce and fresh goods to the market. We dropped our one-day alcohol license as part of this, so there will not be beverages attached to this. I do want to make mention that we work with Care for the Cape and Islands, so this is a sustainable event. We align with the Select Board's vision and mission statements. We submitted our executive summary, an overview of our safety plan, and also we have 41 points to the green checklist, so I think we did pretty good. And I'm just here to answer any questions you may have for our Farmers Market that we hope to bring to the Canal Region.
That sounds great. Any questions from the board?
No, I'm so excited.
Yes.
Yeah, this sounds really great. A great partnership with the concerts, too.
Yeah, well, yeah, it brings the foot traffic, and I think that Maria's done a really good job of bringing the bodies there, and I think it'll be an easy lift since we have the connections with the farmers to ensure that their food will be purchased.
The Mashpee is on a different day, right?
Correct. Mashpee's on Sunday.
Yes. Is it by the library?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And we even brand it. It's cute for the Canal Region, so it'll be its own little entity, and we're really excited to get this off the ground.
Oh, this sounds really good.
So it's rain or shine?
Rain or shine. We have to show up, even if the music doesn't.
Okay.
So it's a little bit more than just a traditional farmer's market, which is nice. Yeah, it's more of an event.
Yeah, exactly. That festival vibe without...
Sure, yeah, it's great.
Crazy. It's very much a family-oriented event. We always have youth activities, so we're working with Oplasis, and we always have some sort of health and wellness that we add to it, no charge for people that show up. So we're really working on some grant opportunities to build some more opportunities here in the Canal Region and Bourne.
All right, sounds great.
Fantastic.
Any questions or comments from the public or Zoom? All right, are we ready for a motion?
Motion to approve Lemonade Company's use of Buzzards Bay Park for the Farmers Market on listed days.
As conditioned by departments, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie.
Sure.
Oh, whatever. Not a lot here.
Was planning on it. Beat me to the punch.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gene?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ votes yes, 5-0-0. Sounds great. Welcome. Hope to see you on a Thursday.
Wonderful to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Bourne Fire Department Centennial Committee use of Buzzards Bay Park for the Fire Department Centennial Celebration on July 12th, 2025, rain date July 13th, 2025. See Marty Green, and I thought Steven Filbrook. Phil Tora.
Good evening. Been a while since I only see two familiar faces. Yes, as we had some discussions a few months back relative to this, we have worked on it quite a bit here. We have something planned for the July 12th, having, there's a couple of different groups around the Northeast have antique fire trucks, so we've secured some entertainment. We're contacting the folks with these antique fire trucks. I've had some meetings with Maria Levis, who's been a blessing actually helping us organize that. So basically, we want to have, we have a food vendor lined up and antique fire trucks, and once we get the blessing from you folks, we're going to invite, obviously, some public officials from the Board of Selectmen through some state officials and federal officials recognized in 100 years, because as much as we may show the antique fire trucks, and we've got quite a bit of history, we've got to work with the Historical Commission, and so that's been kind of exciting, not the fact what it is now, but what it was, why it took 100 years to get here. As a chief, I inherited a previous chief's position and had some background to, someone explained it, I can't imagine the first few chiefs here that started from, literally started from scratch. And what the first fire truck was, $750.
That'd be a lot of money in those days.
Yeah, well, there's a whole story behind that, too, we'll share with you. We are having a kickoff party April 5th at the Eagles with a $10 donation at the door, and, you know, we're going to start showing some of that. Brayley family was...
Is that April 5th?
April 5th.
Did I say April 5th?
You said April 5th.
Oh, yeah, April 5th.
You didn't say a date.
I thought I said the wrong date.
No, she said, he said April 5th.
Okay.
After two hours of video today, the Brayley family, Danny Brayley's family, had a bunch of videos, so that was kind of interesting, some of the faces. I didn't recognize them all, I recognized some of them, but there were some good times, to say the least. And so it's been, it's interesting, and ultimately, the goal here is to get this in the Historical Commission's hands, not only for the past 100 years, and work with the future, because a lot of this technology is no longer, just finding a DVD player, it took three of us to track one down to get it converted to digital. Seriously, DVD still was a big deal for me.
I still have one in my closet.
Yeah, exactly.
I was going to say, you should ask me.
Yeah.
So it's been a challenge, but it's been fun. And Chief Hobbit, Lieutenant Tora, I won't tell you how many text messages I get in an afternoon, but that's kind of where we're at.
Sounds good.
Some businesses will step up, and it'll be fun on April 5th and as well as July 12th, although we're a rain date.
Yeah, it says July 13th.
Right, July 13th.
I'm sorry?
July 13th is the rain date.
The next day.
Yeah, 12 and 13, 13 being the rain date.
That's a good plan. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Bourne Fire Department Centennial Committee's use of Buzzards Bay Park for the Fire Department Centennial Celebration, substitute conditions by town departments.
Second.
Date of event, July 12th, 2025, and a rain date of July 13th, 2025.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Gene?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ votes yes, 5-0-0. You are all set.
Thank you. And I meant to mention real quick, we've had some informal discussions with the police chief as if there's any impact on traffic and so forth, so clearly, we've got some work to do as well as it builds up.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
You're all set with your date. All right, thank you. Okay, next up, Superintendent, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me here again this year to present.
Wait, one second. What about this?
Breakthrough is not ready, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, we had a cancellation.
I thought I was going to go sit down. Good evening, thank you so much for inviting me again here. Thank you to our Town Administrator and our Assistant Town Administrator for providing you the slides for this evening, and we can begin. I will try to make this slightly abbreviated, as I've been told I'm a little long-winded.
Roger?
Yeah?
Point it that way, please.
Okay.
Does it turn on?
Yeah.
Am I doing the wrong one?
There you go. There you go.
All right. So our Budget Subcommittee is made up of Michael Deegan, Dominic Camorano, Robert Fitchamire, and Mary Ann Smith. Some community involvement, these are some of the activities that our students are involved in our five sending towns. You can see here for the town of Bourne, we actually assisted in our auto collision shop in working, restoring an old cruiser so that it was redone and given to the Department of Natural Resources. Cooperative education, Upper Cape Tech is top in the Commonwealth for our placement of students out in the work field. The 1.434327 is the total that those students have earned in that year. It averages a little over $6,000 each. Our enrollment, it has continued to increase, and you can see here from 2019 into the present. Our enrollment by town in the town of Bourne, we are up 15 students this year.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When you say this year, are you talking about projected for FY '27, for next year?
That's this current school, that's this current school year.
2024-25.
24-25, this is for 24-25.
Those, you're basing the numbers on 24-25 school year? That's where the 215 comes from?
Yes, those are actual students at the school this year.
How come those are different from what's reported to DESI? Because their report's 204. How is that different?
It changes with the number of students that are actually marked in town, as well as LPN students that are working within and coming as our post-secondary students within the town, that live in the town.
So that's included in the 215?
Correct.
Because DESI doesn't report it like that?
Right.
So that's, so you have 11 students, then, that are LPNs from Bourne?
We have, no, not from the town. I'd have to see DESI's numbers and where they actually get them. These are actual numbers that are reported that actually come from the Department of Revenue, DOR.
Okay. Because the other, yeah, it's very confusing when you look at numbers and get statistics and data, because the budgets are so tight and the numbers are based on, you know, reporting.
Right.
So like even for enrollment numbers, like DESI reports 838 students and you're reporting 871, so I don't understand why the numbers are so, the gap is so big.
Well, I can only...
And even previous years, like, I just don't get it.
Right. I can only tell you what DOR actually sends, and I think they send them to the towns as well, from DOR, on the actual numbers. We have no input into those. Those are actually done by the state, so those aren't reported from Upper Cape.
So you get them, you get the, do you get them?
We do. They send them to us.
Do you report to you?
They send them to us. That's not something... They send them to us. That's not something that I send out and send to my towns. This actually comes from the Department of Revenue from the state themselves.
Because I always thought the numbers had to come from DESI.
Yep. But I'm happy to look into that and get back to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Why there's such a discrepancy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I know in past years, Marlene and I have had the discussion that even certain students that are earmarked in there with their address, we've actually tried to change those down. DOR does not make those changes. Even if I want to argue the fact with them, which I have, on not only the town of Bourne, but for the town of Wareham, they're reluctant to make any of those changes because they're the ones that actually set those numbers.
Wow. Because that's, it's, I mean, it's a lot of money.
Oh, agree.
When you think in your, right, when the perp pool expenditure is like 22,000 plus assessed for us, and you know, I'm looking at numbers that seem so skewed.
Right, well, you look at the town of Wareham, last year was up 25, and this year they're down 18.
Yeah. According to DOR.
According to DOR. Our net school spending numbers, and these again, this is from FY '24, this comes from DESE. This is the actual difference in what is done. You can see that Upper Cape Tech is extremely frugal with each dollar that we're given. Our operating assessment, so student to student, this is a high school student, in each one of our five sending towns, that's the actual operating cost for each student. Again, remembering that Upper Cape Tech acts as a municipality, we have all of the overhead, all of the health insurance, all of the snow removal, electricity, all of the overhead costs that go along with it, along with the retirement costs for our retirees, or the insurance costs for our retirees. Some of our budget drivers this year are contractual obligations. We've settled with our union at a 3.25% increase, along with steps in lanes for our teachers. The health insurance increase, as we're part of Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, they are actually meeting tomorrow their steering committee to set their rate for this coming year, which is also a problem, because you're doing this budget ahead based off of their initial responses for what they have for an increase. Vocational costs, as we look across just ourselves within our homes, whether it be the cost of steel, the cost of wood, the cost of eggs, has all gone up to the point where it's tripled or beyond. And then, of course, the increase in student enrollment, yes?
Yeah. Is there any opportunities for like consortium where you buy bulk with other communities to cut down on supplies?
It's difficult to do that when you're looking to, again, act as a municipality, would be as Bourne trying to buy with Wareham to purchase a particular item.
Right.
And have it come in, unless you were buying eggs for the year, or like we do gas. So the gasoline is set by, and just like the municipalities do, Upper Cape Tech bids in to purchase their gas ahead of time. It's one of the few opportunities that you have to actually do that. So our FY '26 approved budget that was approved by our school committee. You'll see our school committee here, along with what was FY '25 and the increases to FY '26. As I'm going through, if you have a question, please ask. Instruction, our school leadership, our principal, his office, the individuals all in there, and the supplies, our curriculum and department leaders, and as I mentioned earlier, our teachers, their teacher salaries, our assistants, and the substitutes. Instruction, professional development. We were just noticed in our audit, and we are audited each year by an independent auditor, to provide additional professional development for Pell Grants for our LPN programs, on keeping all of the, in light of the cyber attacks that have been going on across the Commonwealth, in how to mitigate that and keep the information from getting out there. Power School, for instance, I'm sure you're all aware, had that across the country. Our instructional materials, textbooks, the increase along with the eBooks that we use, and our instructional technology, which is our Chromebooks for all of our students. Our guidance department, along with the supplies for guidance, psychological services. And then our student services, the medical and health is our two school nurses with 871 students. You definitely have to have two school nurses when you have 15 independent shops acting as independent businesses. Our athletics, our coaching, and our officials, as we have increased the number of students, and at least a third of our students are playing any given sports season, playing sports, along with the increase of the wrestling team, and we're moving forward to look at girls lacrosse. I mean, girls field hockey, excuse, we have girls lacrosse already, adding, yes. Our student activities, which is all of the advisors, the clubs that we have, and then school security, which is also the detail at the bottom of the hill, both morning and evening. Operations and maintenance, our custodial services, we've been looking for a full-time custodian, we had to outsource some of that to a company, so you'll see that increase in that line item, along with just the cost of supplies. Our heating and utilities, again, a modest increase based off of what is happening, both gas and electric. And then the maintenance of our grounds. Operations and maintenance of our buildings, again, as I mentioned earlier, we act as a municipality, so we are caused to do all of our own snow removal, cleaning, maintenance of our buildings, as we continue to move forward and maintain Upper Cape Tech. Our maintenance of equipment. Fixed charges, our employees' benefits, and I mentioned that earlier about our healthcare costs and the increase there. Building and liability costs, that's also for our vehicles. And then school choice, which we do not participate in, but this is another example of the Department of Revenue putting money that goes in for those students that may go from the town of Bourne to Falmouth. It goes into our budget and out of our budget, right to that town, through DOR. Our total foundation budget here is $20,165,300. Our revenue, and this chapter 78 comes right off of the cherry sheet, you'll see the increase here, that represents the $75 per student. That is the only increase that was given out across the Commonwealth this year to the towns, putting much more of the burden back on all of our towns. The anticipated revenues, our anticipated municipal Medicaid, and then this year, school committee applied $300,000 against the budget to try to lessen that assessment to the towns. That left us with a net foundation budget of $15,125,490. Transportation and LPN. The transportation is provided by the district, you'll see the slight increase, again, those are the costs for the drivers and their increase in salaries. Our contracted transportation, we use Lucini Bussing. Total transportation here is $1,523,291. Our anticipated transportation aid, which is again off of the cherry sheet, coming from the Governor's House One, of $1,283,446, leaves us with a net transportation of $239,845. Our LPN program and the cost, you'll see that there is a savings of $23,776. That subtracted from the net transportation leaves us with a net combined transportation and LPN of $216,069. Our capital, we have not increased our capital. Again, we're trying to be good stewards and remembering that our sending towns and what's being done, we try to truly spend every dollar the best we can at Upper Cape. That stabilization fund of $175,000 goes immediately into our fund to repair our roof, which will be coming off of the MSBA, because we have been invited into that process, and I've already reached out, I'm asking that our town administrator be part of our construction, or her designee, to be part of our construction council. Mr. Meyer has already expressed interest, we will be putting that out as an ad, so anyone that would like to participate can actually send in an application or send in a request to do so, and we will process that through, perform a full committee based off of the five sending towns. Our total capital is $305,000. I believe every good presentation has a pie chart, and I'd be remiss not to have that, I say that each year. So here is our pie chart. You notice that almost 60% of every dollar that comes into Upper Cape Tech is spent on instruction. Our FY '26 operating budget has an increase of the overall net operating budget after the revenues have been applied, a 3.189% increase. Our enrollment by the percentages for the operating budget, which is by the number of students that you have from each town. Capital is done differently, that's by the number, total number of students within the town, not including kindergarten, so it's first grade through 12. We want to thank you for your support, and I will answer any questions you might have.
Does Upper Cape have an activity fee for after-school programs, or is it absorbed into the budget?
It's absorbed into the budget, we have no fees for any of our activities or our sports. The students will purchase their own jersey for sports, because they'll more than likely have their name on the back of it, and they will be keeping that.
I'm just a little confused about the numbers, but if we could have a better understanding of that, I would appreciate it.
And I'm happy to have you come up, and I will reach out to DOR.
Okay. Because I thought they were always based on DESI's numbers, like budgets, based on that assessment, but it's based on a DOR assessment.
Purely DOR.
Wow.
The Department of Revenue runs and does all of that, so we have no control. Our October 1 numbers, I share immediately once I see what they are with our town administrators of all my five towns, to say, this is what we have. Now, knowing full well that DOR may have something slightly different in the future, but for planning purposes, this is what you can count on, because this is what I can see day to day.
That is really interesting, because like where do you go and find the DOR numbers?
Right.
Like how they find them?
How do they get them?
Yeah.
Oops. Yeah.
Guys, what are you doing?
Yeah. Yeah.
Of course, formulas aren't having caught up with the times.
This looks great, and it's great that you got in the MSBA roof accelerated roof program.
We are beginning the process, April 1st, so April Fool's Day is our number one day, we have 270 days from which to start the process, so that's why I say we'll begin to put it out to form the committee, send that committee in, it's part of the paperwork. There's a huge stack for us to go through to begin the planning purposes and keep all of the towns, again, ahead of the curve on what's happening and what it might look like, and so that they have input into their school, their regional school, Upper Cape.
Awesome.
Any comments from the public or from Zoom, from my Zoom members?
Do you, oh, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Do you ever get turnbacks? Are there ever turnbacks with your budget to towns?
No, that goes into E and D.
It goes, right.
Ex- deficiency is there, retained earnings there. So they don't have to give a percentage back if the student?
So by statute, through, again, through DOR, you're allowed to hold 5% back of what your budget is. We do that. Each year, your budget at the end of the year report is actually certified, and that amount cannot be over 5% of what that budget is. Anything beyond that automatically has to go back. Now, we have not had that happen. You'll notice last year in the presentation, the school committee did not put any money back against the budget. This year, they put $300,000, which removed that from their E and D line item to give back to the towns to lower the assessment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how it's applied to the next year's budget.
Again, this budget is.
It goes back to the town?
No.
It just goes to.
Stays in there.
Well, you take it off.
Well, unlike.
When you can.
Yes. Unlike most businesses, schools and the state are a year behind. So the numbers are this year's numbers of students that are in Upper Cape Tech. The budget, we won't be paid for those students until the following year.
Right.
So you're always behind.
Previous years.
Right. I always invite the FinComs to come up and to enjoy lunch and take a tour. I would love to have the select board come up and visit and do so. Some of you have already, but I would be happy to do that. We love to give tours, so I put that out to the audience as well. If you'd like to come up, let us know, and we're happy to give you a tour. And anyone that's listening at home as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You are very, very welcome. If you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out.
And.
Marlene, thank you, Melissa, thank you so much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is review annual town meeting articles and draft motions. The first item under that is zoning downtown sign bylaw, and I don't know if you have a quorum of the planning board, if you're planning on calling a meeting, I think you did post a meeting, but. Jen Copeland.
Good morning, good evening, Jen.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you tonight. I'm here to provide an update on the downtown signs, and I'm, for the record, I'm Jen Copeland, Town Planner, and this article is to amend Section 2880 of the zoning bylaw relative to the downtown district signs. The Design Review Committee is a long-established subcommittee that reports to the planning board. You've seen this bylaw before, it was brought to special town meeting last year, it was postponed. So the planning board is proposing an initiative to amend the signed bylaw as described in the warrant article. The changes are intended to organize and streamline the bylaw language to make the regulations more user-friendly for first-time applicants, revise paragraphs that might be confusing or redundant, or should be covered in another section of the bylaw, clarify language on maintenance versus reconstruction of signs, clarify the enforcement process on unmaintained or abandoned signs, better define non-conforming or grandfathered signs, and add definitions to clarified bylaw terms. So the proposed bylaw changes apply only to our downtown district, not townwide, and the intent of this article is to encourage and guide improvements that will improve the visual coherence and civic identity of the downtown without establishing a specific style, and will contribute to the goal of an attractive and vibrant business environment.
Thank you. And I think actually it didn't go to town meeting last year.
No, no, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
We didn't feel it was ready, so we postponed it to the spring. I have to say, I think this is, this has been a great process. The planning board provided the select board with a copy of their proposed bylaw before the public hearing, and so that gave us an opportunity to have input, and I really liked that process. So, and I think the bylaw is, I personally, I think it's in really good shape, so. What's in our packet seems good. Anne Marie?
In Section 2888, signs not permitted, in Section C, where it says no signs shall be located on or over town property or any public right-of-way, except for awnings or projecting signs without the approval of the select board after receiving a recommendation from the Design Review Committee. So when I think of that section of the regulation, I'm, it's those signs, let's say like Canal Day asks to put a banner over, you know, Buzzards Bay, Main Street, Buzzards Bay, should there be language with respects to timing of when the sign should be taken down? Should we add some limitation that it has to be taken down within 48 hours or whatever? Is that necessary in that section, do you think? Or is it covered in another section? Because I, you know, I go through towns, sometimes you go through a town and there's a banner up that, you know, in the event took place months ago, and the banner's still over the town.
I know banners like for particular days. Like, when we approve a banner, don't we say you can have it up from this day to this day?
I don't know, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do it day-specific.
We do.
From A to, you know, going up to when it comes down.
Yeah, there's a limit for temporary banners, but I do think it's something that the select board could decide when they're approving one.
Well, that's how we do it now.
Right.
Okay.
We.
That's the only thing that came to mind.
The town puts those up and takes them down.
Right.
And I can't necessarily promise we'll always have the ability to take it down within 24 hours. We take it down after the event as our schedule allows.
Okay.
If a DPW does it, they go out and change them.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Understood.
You see it. You can always let Marlene know.
It's just a bad beef.
Not in this town, though. Any other questions for the board?
No, it's a great, some great language changes.
Gene or Melissa?
Just after all this time, it's really nice to see this come together, so I'm very happy.
I agree. I think it was extremely well done, and I really appreciate the work. Appreciate the work that they've, and thought to get it done. So thank you.
Now, making this more efficient, you know, easier to understand, and more customer-friendly. I mean, it's long overdue.
There's just clarity to it, especially for the downtown district.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
And so this version, this planning board-endorsed version, is what's going to go into the handbook?
Yes, it's, the planning board-endorsed version is now in the warrant that is online.
Awesome. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board? Anybody else want to say anything from the planning board, or anybody else? I think this is great.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for working on it. Okay, next is CPC articles. Barry, I see you're on the phone. Did you star six to unmute yourself?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Barry.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I want to start out by saying that all of the requests that have been placed before us is maybe funded through current available funds or reserves that are on hand in the community preservation fund. Secondly, last night, we met with the CPC committee, and we have voted to approve and recommend the filing by the Historical Society, both housing request and the Commonwealth Basketball Court. And also, we will be holding a meeting next week, because there were three projects that we felt we wanted to have more information. And so, and you're going to have a presentation tonight also. So that was the Chester Park application, that's like a rail trail, and also the community preservation article for administration and operational expenses. So with that, there are some presenters here tonight. So I would like to start off with the very first application, which was filed by the Bourne Historical Society, and they have requested $14,500. And this project aims to document and record for posterity the historical and architectural significance of the Keene House in the event that the Bourne Historical Society is unable to proceed with its relocation and restoration as previously proposed. So this came forth as a suggestion from a prior citizen, as well as a society. And again, they will get back to us as to whether the Keene House relocation project starts. And then, in case we, the house for some reason is going to be torn down, this survey of the house will be done by a registered architect, and we file it up in the archives for future reference. So you can open it up for any questions, Madam Chairman, or we'll go right through the next program.
Any questions?
Okay, hearing none.
Yeah, go ahead.
The next one, thank you. The next one is from the Bourne Housing Partnership and Trust, and I believe Sue Ross is-
Sue Ross, Sue Ross is here.
Good evening. I'm Sue Ross, Chairperson of the Bourne Housing Partnership and Housing Trust. Tonight, I would just like to describe a little bit about our CPA application. It's the one, you know, we've done it every year since it started, and thanks to CPS, CPS, CBA, we've been able to continue all our work. We have started our programs, and we need this money. It helps us to promote new ones, to maintain the ones we already have, and to keep affordable housing in Bourne alive and well. Some of our money will go to our staff, which includes our accountant and bookkeeper, and our program manager. They work part-time, but they work hard and are great. And for all the office supplies needed for them to do their work. We also need outside professional, technical, and legal support. And we need that for various programs that have to be done according to housing rules and regulations. We also hire Housing Assistant Corporation to monitor all of our houses and apartments, whatever, that are deed-restricted. And every year, they overlook, they look at each property, they send out a letter, they make sure that everybody's adhering to their deed riders, and we keep, and that we can keep these places on our books in perpetuity. We also use it for technical and help when we have to go to a house to look at it for our repair program, and we have to have word, work, we have to have work, I don't know what the word is now, but they have, they draw up a program for us, I mean, for each carpenter to do, and then they go and inspect it afterwards. So it's many, many people being paid and many items being paid out of this, this request for $98,000.
Any questions from the board? And Sue?
Not a question, but I can say that as a representative of that committee, that this money is well-spent every year, that the expertise that this money provides, you know, it takes the stress away from the town budget, because it's not a town that probably provided, so we get the services through this, and so it helps the town out immensely. And Sue Ross is our chair for many, many years, has kept us all on the up and up, so I appreciate that.
And I do want to say that the town budget does give us our anchors, which is Jen Copeland and Sean Lewis, who we, we need and we love having, and they attend every meeting and are there for us at all times. So I want to thank them also.
Who's the first town administrator staff that has given the support for affordable housing, so, you know, over the years? So it is great, it is great. We appreciate it from management and all the town administrators to give us the support for that program. In fact, maybe you can speak on it. April 21st, I think it is, is the ribbon-cutting for Cape View Way, which is one of our initiatives.
Yeah, I think it's April 24th, but yes.
Yeah, I know it's around there.
And which, I think it was 43 units, and they had 625 qualified applicants. So we need affordable housing in Bourne.
Okay. Any other questions? I think you're good.
And I'm, I'm just going to, going to briefly, the next applicant is the Bourne Housing Authority.
Right.
And-
If I could for a minute, I have to recuse myself from this agenda item.
Okay.
Okay.
The director of this, of whom couldn't be here today. And she wrote me an email the other day that said that her request is to finish the last two family buildings on our Waterhouse Road family units. "We successfully completed the first five, and they look amazing. Once we complete these last two, our family housing will be complete minus landscape work. Our tenants are very happy with the way the buildings have turned out. We replaced siding, trim, shingle, and doors. We added in new steps to enter each unit," so they, they call it the envelope that they have done. And they've done all the ones that are off to the side, the handicap accessible units, and now they're finishing the duplexes on Waterhouse Road.
They've been doing this for a couple of years.
Yes.
Well, what happened is the state for their capital plan doesn't give enough money to fix these. So this is, this is just to offset that. Because if not, then it would take longer to get our state properties back out the snuff, and we don't know what's going to happen with Rowan Finney Place, which is a federal property now. Thank God a lot of the work was done there before the changes recently with HUD. So, so yeah, but this is, like you said, money well-spent, because it offsets what the state can't, can only gives them to do it.
It is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sue. Welcome, Alice.
Hello, my name is Alice Howe. I'm from Polkassett, and I am a member of the Recreation Committee. It says up there, Alice Howe, this is my husband, he's using my laptop to key. So just, I'm not in two places at once. And I am filling in for Jim Linsky, who did a stellar job last night. I mean, there were meetings left and right, and, but he hurt his back, so I'm filling in? I just found out this afternoon. The Chester Park is the first, we're applying for two applications for the, from CPC. And the first one is the Chester Park recreational area. That recreational area is not Emmons Road Monument Beach, and it's not having anything to do with the baseball field that is Monument Beach Baseball Field on Shore Road. But that little idyllic-looking, beautiful community, Chester Park in Monument Beach, when you go down that road from the antique railroad building. Train stop. And it's a beautiful park, if you've never been there. And so, we did, the Recreation Committee completed a needs assessment in January '24. And that needs assessment, you can see right on that slide, that the tennis pickleball courts, the basketball court, they rated very low. This was one out of five points. And we were tasked with making some evaluation of all of our community assets for the Recreation Department. And this is what we discovered. And so, what we, our goal is to retain that beautiful setting as much as possible, but to re, basically redo the whole park. We met and came up with some ideas, and the company is Dever- I've got to look it up here. Deverlis, I can't pronounce the other name, but that was the engineering company, and they came up with some ideas. And the first, this is Concept A. And I'm not going to go over every item, but a few things stood out. One thing, we were looking at, how can we improve and not change this beautiful area? And so, we had disc golf. And this, again, we listened to people at first. We came up with some of these ideas. Beach volleyball, spectator seating with shade, and a big basketball court. But when you look at that, it takes away from the green space that is there. And if you've ever, if you ever take away green space from people who take yoga on Sundays, there must be 40 people there on the grass doing yoga, and it's, people who live there and don't live there, they all come. So that green space is really important to the residents who live there and visitors. So we looked at all this, and then, in addition, on the right side of the slide, it shows that we really wanted to listen to the community, the larger community of Bourne, and also specifically the residents there, who would be most affected by any changes. So we had a survey and had 319 responses received. And then we had another meeting, an engagement meeting on February 27th, and 50 people attended that meeting, and we worked very hard looking at Concept A, and what we liked and didn't like, and so forth. Then we had public comments, and we received 38 of them. So putting all of that together, we came up with Concept B. And I won't go into all of it, but you will notice some things missing. No disc golf. We thought the volleyball, beach volleyball would be better to be down the road at the beach. And, and looking at where we had placed the basketball court was taking away some green space. So when we listened to the people who lived there, and they said, "That basketball court is used, but it doesn't need to be an official, big-size basketball court. It could be smaller." And so, we moved it a little bit to give more green space. And, and, and things that people liked about this design was Adirondack chairs for people to come and look at the sunset. And you can see the, parking logistics. There, it's tough if you've ever driven down there. It's very, very narrow, especially on Monument Road and then Arthur Avenue. It's, it's a nightmare. So that parking will have to be looked at and reviewed and so forth. It's just not an easy fix. Some residents had suggested that we go to an annex parking, which is across from the firehouse, right there in Monument Beach. I did talk with the fire department today, two firemen, firefighters. I went and visited there to just hear what they said. And it looks deceiving, because it looks like, "Oh, my gosh, there's so much room there. We could just all park there." There's going to have, I mean, they need a lot of room for the fire trucks to get in and out. So there's going to be a chance to compromise, I'm sure. We would not even suggest anything without talking to the fire department chief and so. But definitely, parking is a consideration that we will be looking at in more detail. And green space, drainage, and retaining wall evaluation, we want to look at that, because obviously, we don't want the water to come through and then wreck everything that we have done to improve this space. A half-basketball court, possible electricity. When you sit down with the residents, I mean, they were hoping that maybe we could get electricity there so they could watch movies on the green. I mean, it's, it's, there's all different ideas, so that's a possibility. And dedicated hard courts. One dedicated court for tennis and four dedicated courts for pickleball. And our limitation of when, because we want to add lights, but we also want to be careful of the noise at night for, so that is something to be determined at what night, what hour we close down for pickleball and tennis. Vegetation and maintenance. Here, maintenance is a key factor. And I believe that the Assistant Town Manager, Liz, is going to be meeting with the DPW and our Recreation Department Head, Katie Matthews, to come up with a plan for maintenance of this. For instance, the bask, not the basketball, well, the racquetball, not racquetball, the pickleball and tennis will have- tennis will have steel beams underneath, because this is a very sandy area, it's right on the beach. And so, this surfacing will be different than you see surfaces now. And there is a 20-year guarantee, so it will be done very well. So that, then we came up with Concept B, and made some changes, and met, we are going to meet again on April 10th with the Monument Beach Village Association to, again, make some adjustments probably to this. They have been amazing, because they're so supportive of us coming in and trying to make it a nicer place, but not change too much. And keeping the open space was really important. So I think that is everything on that, if there's anything.
Can you just mention the condition of the courts and why?
Oh, yes. A couple of years ago, I was asking money for the Recreation Committee and Department to rehab courts all around outside. Monument Beach or Chester Park courts were not included, because they were too dilapidated. They couldn't be rehabbed. They have to be rebuilt. And so, I mean, if you, we had to lock the courts at one point. And then the DPW came and did a great job of trying to shore it up, but it doesn't last. And so that's why we're looking at a complete redo of the courts.
Well, the good thing about it, for the chair, is you involve.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's all right, you go first.
Well, I was just going to say, we did come up with a figure.
Yep.
To not go over $1.3 million. Not to go over that amount. Again, it is a re, it's redoing the whole park.
Understood, and it's good that, you know, for your public process, you're involved in the property or the neighbors over in that part of town, and giving them input on it, because they're the ones that have to deal with it one way or another, with its noise or lights at night or everything else. So, because I've been at a couple of the meetings, you know, for, you know, so I see the input that's out there. It's long overdue, and if you build it, they will use it. I know from personal experience, once we did Buzzards Bay Park over now, it's, they're always using it. And so, this will have the similar effect, you know, if it's approved and the project's done, because it will bring people out into the village to do things. So I think, I think it's something that's money well spent, and it's nice to get people outside, instead of being cooped up indoors all the time.
Okay, do you want to talk about the Jason Comalitti?
Sure, I'll go right into that. The Jason Comalitti, it's out back here. And if you can see on that slide, it is, it's in the top part, and it's all discolored. That's because it's a mess. It is, that, that basketball court was created on top of a tennis court. It is, now needs to be replaced. And we need to reconstruct the courts with post-tension concrete, has a 25-year life, which will be wonderful, and addition of four basketball hoops, in addition to replacing the current two, and new lighting. And this is going to be a wonderful addition to what is already going in, going to be in place this summer and this fall. This summer, the playground is going to be redone, and that money is already, you know, spent. I mean, it's, we've got that. And the other project is the All Wheel Skate Park, which is right next to the basketball court. This will help to make Main Street Buzzards Bay really a, like a showplace for families, because we'll have younger kids with the playground, older kids, and disabled. I mean, we'll have handicap for the All Wheel Skate Park. And then, the basketball court, which will be enlarged a little bit, because it wasn't the right size. It just had to fit on top of the tennis court. And then we will have team, not, well, seating for the teams, and then seating for people to, spectators. And that is for $400,000.
Well, the story behind that court is, when we were thinking about the cutbacks in 2015, it was going to close this building down. And so, in, you know, four hours of operation where the kids couldn't get a use of the basketball court, we used the court. So that's when I brought it forward on the behalf of the Select Board, to see if we could use CPC funds to create this court. And with the lights outside, so we could give the kids something that they could use, because they were going to lose it, based on this building being down, the limited hours at the time. And probably the best, one of the best things that we've done over the course of many years, because as anybody in this room, once the weather gets warm, they're out here in the afternoon.
Even when it's cold. There's always there. Every time I come for a meeting here, there's people playing basketball. It's unbelievable, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a great, a great job, great job.
And something that Jim Linsky had included in his presentation, which I'm just going to mimic, he said he had met with some people who have basketball, a basketball league in Hyannis, is the only place, it's indoors, where there is a league for BORN to participate. If this, if this gets redone, then there can be a league for different towns to participate with BORN, right here. And I've heard that it's not just kids who use it, adults always are playing basketball, and so I think it's a great project.
Great. Very nice, good work. I just want to warn you, I just want to warn you that when we're looking at the budget now for this open space with the Chester Park and the basketball and the rail trail is zeroed out of all available funds. So some of the money for the Chester Park is coming out of the Undesignated Fund. So you guys have been doing a really good job, you've been very active about getting projects going, but there may come a time when, like, prioritizing is, you know, we're going to have to maybe slow down. But this has been great work, and I think you've really, really been able to identify priorities and just hone in on specific projects and get public involvement, and I think that's really great.
And as time goes on, we can add projects, but I realize what you're saying. Yeah, it can't be all about the Recreation Department. But it hadn't been looked at for a while.
It was long overdue, and, you know, not everybody's a beachgoer and boater, and this is, these are such valuable assets, and, you know, we need to provide.
The Chester Park thing looks great. It looks really great.
It's pristine location, it's, it's got the best view in town, the best sunsets. You're at Mo Beach at Chester Park.
And I was thinking, you know, we are going to be building a new fire station, and so that fire station area can be used in the future for parking, you know, once it's no longer a fire station. So we have to keep that in mind as, you know, that in the future, we'll hopefully be able to expand parking there.
Great, great idea. Thank you.
The fact that we're showing pride in our different, in our parts of town, you know, it's, it's good, you know, because you go to other towns and you see this, and now that we're doing our part.
They're great community safe spaces, they're just, it's something for everyone.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Okay. So moving right along, Final Engineering and Construction Administration Services for BORN Rail Trail, are we doing that tonight? Is Tim on?
Yes, Tim is on Zoom.
Yes, I am.
Hi, Tim.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Tim Line, the Engineering Department, here to request more funding for Phase 1 of the BORN Rail Trail. This is for final design services, as well as Construction Administration of construction that should begin this fall. We had some changes and some, a lot of public input last summer, and as a result, we did have to change the design a little bit, so some of that, the funding requested tonight is going to go to that. So we did have an original advertiser date of June, but that is going to be pushed back to September, so we'll advertise in September. But again, it does give us some time to fix the things we wanted to, and really have everybody talking and getting our final reviews. So that being said, we do need to be under contract with Construction Administration, with DOT, ah, with our designer, I'm sorry, with our designer, in case there's field changes when we go out to bid. So this would be the time to ask for that money. Trying to be responsible with our ask and being conscious of the budget, but we do feel as though we are comfortable with what we're asking to get this across the finish line. We have not applied for the Mass Trails Grant last year, but we did apply this year for Construction Administration Services. And if we are awarded that grant, we will draw that down first, before we draw down this amount. So that being said, I'm going to leave it open to any comments.
Any questions or comments from the board?
When will you find out about the Mass Trails Grant?
That's the thing, so we won't find out until the end of August, they usually look at by us.
Okay.
I'm pretty hopeful.
And what?
It usually zeros out with the requests.
What, oh, it zeros out? I was just going to ask that.
It's been used in the past that they didn't even get enough asks, but who knows, every, years have really been different with that grant.
Okay.
So you never know, there's going to be a lot of people that come out for it.
Any other questions on that?
Can, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
Anne Marie, I just, the, it would not zero out the request, the CPA funds. So I just want to be clear, the rail trail grant application is for $100,000.
Okay. Can you extend that before you draw down on that? But there's a chance you're not going to have to use the full amount that's being requested.
Possibly not the full amount, but the rail trail grant will not cover all of the work.
Okay.
No, the rail trail grant's for the Construction Administration Services alone, because that's all we would be able to pay for at that time when we get the grant.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, seeing none. Are we going to talk about funding for ortho imagery and planometrics?
Yes, that's an article on the annual warrant.
I had to take, I had to, yeah. How do you pronounce that?
Yes. So I think Tim, it says Tim, so is that you?
Yes, thank you. So the planometrics and the ortho imagery is a flight mission from the Cape Cod Commission. We did this back in 2019, so this will be like an update to that data. The data's very helpful. We have, the ortho imagery is really just satellite imagery, it's typical imagery you look at when you look at like mass mapper. It'll be localized to the Cape, all the towns are particip, most of the towns, I want to say, are participating. And it probably would cost double if we didn't, you know, work with the Cape Cod Commission on this, on this flight. It'll be very helpful with like map making. It, it, the planometrics is really, it itemizes sidewalks, walkways, driveways, houses, woods, different landscape areas, right down to park benches and hydrants. So it's super helpful to have all these different little amenities on different shape aisles. And where the, you know, I had some thought after last night when we met with FINCOM, if there's any special uses for it. It actually allows engineers to do conceptual stormwater analysis. So you could, you could kind of do a tabletop exercise to give yourself some sort of idea for drainage calculations based on the type of surface. So there's, there's really little, it's a really helpful set of data for us to have going into the next five years.
So what's the ask on this? It's, this isn't CPC, we're out of CPC, we're in, they're just a regular article, so.
That's correct. This will be free cash, and I have it in the updated warrant.
Is this the $17,133?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to ask for that, or like $20,000?
No, I mean, that's what the Cape Cod Commission has.
$17,133?
Yeah, that's what the Cape Cod Commission has set as BORN share.
Okay.
So if they give us different information, I'll revise it accordingly.
Okay. So it's not like a quote thing, it's like they've already got their quote and they've finished it. So top of you, you have to worry about like little bits of off, so, okay. No, this sounds good. Okay, any questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
Free cash, you said?
Free cash.
Free cash.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, next Recreation Department and program update. Welcome, Katie.
My name's Katie Matthews, I'm the Recreation Director. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak on behalf of the Rec Department. 2024 was a transformative year for the Rec Department. I gratefully accepted this position as the Rec Director in February of '24, and we welcomed Keith McCready, our Assistant Rec Director, shortly after in April. This year, we've seen a 7% increase in programming participation, as well as a 27% increase in household accounts on bornrec.com. We've made great strides in our communication efforts, issuing a monthly rec rundown, updating the community on the ongoings of our department and the greater community. Hard copies for that are available in the Rec Office, and we release that digitally on our Facebook, as well as emailing it through bornrec.com. In conjunction with the Rec Committee, we've completed Phase 1 of our hard court rehab project, resurfacing the tennis and pickleball courts at Clark, Katomet, Keith, and Pocasset Rec. Also with the help from the DPW, we were able to equip the hard courts with pickleball nets and storage for the community to borrow at their leisure. We revitalized the Community Center Playground Improvement Project, gathering a total of 18 diverse concepts from various state vendors to aid in the design of the new Community Center Playground. We're happy to share that we will be installing that new playground this summer.
Will it be closed in the summer, or will it be?
There will be a period late spring where we'll have to close the existing playground. The DPW is going to help us to save some costs to demo the playground, and I Swin will be disposing of the product. But that will be clearly communicated.
So you're planning to demo and like rebuild it and have it open part of the summer? That's, is that kind of the way it's going, or is it going to be the?
We hope to have it open.
You can hope.
Right around July 4th.
Okay. Great.
Ongoing projects include the Community Centers All Wheel Park and our Recreation Area Feasibility Study, which you've heard about tonight. All of our department initiatives are led by community-driven data. We keep the town website up to date with all project updates, presentations, surveys, and various reports. As we all know, summer is approaching. And the Recreation Department is focusing on staffing our seven-day-week operation, lifeguarding Monument Beach, and our seven-week summer program. Our summer program is scheduled to run June 23rd through August 8th, and we aim to extend the lifeguarding season this year, opening the beaches on the 3rd Saturday in June and closing on August 10th.
That's our plan.
Yeah. We're hoping. We get this, we're hoping, we're hoping.
It is volatile.
It's good, yeah.
I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the Recreation Committee for their dedication to our mission and steadfast support. We're almost family now at this point, we see each other, I see you more than my family. But I'd also like to thank our Assistant Rec Director, Keith McCready, for his unwavering commitment to our community and the exceptional service he provides to the visitors in the Community Center, of the Community Center and Recreation Department. I'd also like to extend my thanks to the Administration for their valuable guidance throughout this year. I am proud of our accomplishments over the last year. Together, we've established a team dedicated to our mission of delivering thoughtful, community-driven capital improvements, programming, special events, and we look forward to continuing and improving our services for the residents of BORN in the years to come.
Great, thank you. I'm happy to take any questions or elaborate. Questions, comments?
I get the newsletter, I always like, enjoy reading it.
It's awesome.
I wish I was a kid again.
You can be an adult and play at BORN Rec, too. Yeah, there's a lot going on. I mean, there's always a lot going on, so I think it's really great.
Yeah. Your efforts, and I know, and teamwork with Keith and
Your efforts and I know in teamwork with Keith and the Rec Committee as well and everything else, it shows. You know, it's always been, it's been good, but since you've come on, I've seen a lot of happy faces.
Thank you.
So it doesn't go unnoticed and every, and ultimately, you know, your keynote, one is trunk or treat, as we all know, it's a favorite. I mean, I mean.
Already thinking about next year.
Anne Marie's getting creative already, so, you know, Cookie Monster for my cookies. So it's last year, so we'll see what come out there, but the community loves it. You see these kids and the families that come out. If it's not there, it's summertime, it's Christmas with the holiday theme party, and then the list can go on and on, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, next, review special town meeting articles and draft motions.
So I did email out a special warrant this afternoon that was updated after the discussion at the Finance Committee last night. The article number one on the special warrant is for the Select Board to discuss supplemental budget for additional work on the CWMP. As you know, Article 7-11 at the November 16th, 2020 Special Town Meeting funded the CWMP effort at $600,000. And currently, the town has signed a contract with EP, now APEX. The original contract was for $561,000. There was a Contract Amendment 1 in the amount of $23,400 to provide work for the Wastewater Advisory Committee. And there was a Contract Amendment Number 2 for $15,000 to provide additional meetings to discuss watershed permitting. So the total value of the contract with EP is 5,999,400. So 5,99400. I just received EP's latest invoice this morning, so charges as of February 21 have us at $595,800 spent. So there is a total of $3,600 worth of remaining value under the current contract. As you know, in February, Helen Gordon sent us a brief recap, essentially laying out the tasks that are complete and alerting us that if the MEPA decision requires further study, if further study or an EIR, an Environmental Impact Report, are required, additional scope and budget will be necessary as the current contract concludes at the finalization of the draft. CWMP is described in Task 16.13. So as you know, we received the certificate dated March 3rd that does require, if the town is moving forward, does require an Environmental Impact Report, and the request to file a single EIR has been denied. So we are at the point where we have to think about how you want to proceed and if you want to seek additional funds at this time for further work or not.
Based on what we have so far and what we have for a draft, I'm not happy with what we've gotten for investment in this initiative. I strongly would, you know, if we're gonna be looking at extra money, I would consider maybe going back out with an RFP and see about getting new services because I just, I'm just not happy with the way it came out. I think it's a plan that doesn't meet the needs of the community.
Any other comments?
You know, it's kind of a difficult situation to be in, right? With respects to next steps and how we take those steps. You know, if we travel down the road of going with someone new or putting it out to bid again, you know, we're looking at catch-up, right? To get to this, like, review. I don't know, I think it's gonna be, cost more to start fresh with someone else than it would to continue with your current consultant. I don't think it's all on them.
True, true.
The report, I think for me, in the last couple of years that I've been through this process, I know for me, I need to get better at asking the right questions and getting the right information and enough information to formulate better decisions about the direction as well. I'm just speaking for myself.
But maybe things will be different now because the person that was leading this is no longer with that company. Kate Bruce is no longer there, so Helen's still the main person, so maybe if we explain what we don't like, what we have concerns with, maybe Helen has the answers to help, you know, to maybe answer, you know.
Well, there's a lot of direction.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to decide that question tonight.
Right.
So I think we have to focus on the question before us is,
More money?
Do we want to go for more money? And I think we have to go for more money, I think.
Well, that's what I was gonna get to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to go for money. And what we do with that money, whether we go out for an RFP.
Yeah, yeah.
Environmental Partners Apex is more than welcome to make a, to.
Correct.
To participate in the RFP and say, I think what concerns me is that the response, the information that we got from MEPA had some real concerns about deficiencies in the report, and a lot of that had to do with not even looking at searing, and that's kind of a concern that I had, that we were originally supposed to have searing part of the report, and then it kind of changed in the middle. So, but I do think the question is, and not just for CWMP, but for discussing about watershed permit. Because we, you know, there's a lot of people in this community that feel we should be getting a watershed permit. And I know we've said that it was separate from the CWMP, but I'm not sure that it is. So that, we need to, we were, talked about having a workshop to review the comments of the CWMP. And I believe that giving a sort of a summary professional answer is part of what they're supposed to do, is part of their, is part of their job was, that was that. And I think that if we have $3,600 left, having them sort of give us, you know, their analysis of steps that we might have to take in order to address the concerns raised by DEP, I think that's our first step with them and kind of to complete out their contract is to respond to the responses. I do think that we need to ask for money at this town meeting, and I think it's gonna need to be a substantial amount of money. I think we're, there's a, I think there's a lot of work to be done. And I don't have an answer as to how much that is, but I definitely think we need to have enough, we need to do it. And whether we can have a motion ready or whether we can just say that we're gonna be putting in an article that says a sum of money and using the time between now and town meeting to figure out what that money is going to be, might be the way. And in that meantime, to have a discussion. And I think it's gonna be a long process of discussion to determine what path we're gonna take. And the first thing is to hear back from Environmental Partners.
Right, I think they have one more responsibility to the contract.
Yeah, so, and I have, there's like three things that I really want to talk to the board about, like, when we might be able to schedule them, and one is that meeting. And part of that would be dependent on when Helen would have availability. But also, she said, I mean, she was willing to come on the 11th. I don't know if she would have been ready with that kind of response, given the 114 pages of, yeah, so. So, so is that kind of the direction you're looking for? I mean, I don't know if you have a number in mind, but I think it's.
I don't have a number in mind, and, so we can certainly leave the article on there, can execute the warrant.
Yep.
That buys us some, a couple more weeks to work on the motion. I think, I think there has to be a, I think there has to be a full discussion on, on what you need as a community. And I don't think it is just engineering and environmental work. I think, given the complications added by the rules, rule change with Title V, I think you need a significant legal analysis to understand what authority you have and what obligations you have. And that is, you know, whether that is, whether you use town council for that or not, there, I think there has, as part of my suggestion, as part of this discussion, you are going to probably need a team. You're going to need an engineer slash environmental, and you are going to need a legal analysis as part of this. The, probably even a financial advisor component of this. I think you are gonna need a broader team. Given, given the lack of clarity with DEP around Title V and the fact that watershed permits are structured as optional, but now you're being told they're mandated, and the fact that you are going, that you're being told you have to create an Environmental Impact Report down to, down to defining how many truck trips a day is going to remove sludge for a plan, for a plan, not a project, not a construction project. This is, this, there is a lot to unpack here, and there is going to be, there's a lot of legal questions as far as the town's obligations and what you are actually legally able to do. Whether or not you can legally require RMEs, whether you can compel people to do that. So this is, the conversation has shifted a lot since you've started, and I think you have to, I think you have to account for that. And I think you have to change your, I think, I don't think you can just pick up and keep going. I think you are going to have to change your approach.
The other thing I want to sort of follow up on is, after the site visit that we had at the end of January, and I followed up with Maggie Leary about DEP coming to meet with us to talk about.
As she offered to.
Yes, because she did offer, and I didn't get a response, and so I followed up further, and I ended up having a conversation with Gerald Martin. And I think they haven't responded because I think they're not ready to respond. And so that, getting that, getting, getting a meeting or some sort of direction, the question that I posed to DEP is, you need to be able to explain to me the difference of enforcement when there is a watershed permit and when there isn't a watershed permit. And that is not an answer that they've been able to give me yet. So I think there is a lot to be done. I'm not sure that we can answer tonight what our path forward's gonna be. I think we have to set some, we have to set some strategic workshop kind of things on this, but I do think we need to appropriate some money so that if we are gonna put together a team, that we have funds to do, and what that's gonna look like, and who's gonna be on it, and who, if we have, I think when we started our Wastewater Advisory Committee, we dealt with it more of a geographic, to Southside people, to Northside people, Planning Board, this kind of thing. I think we might want to approach that in a different way. And so I think that's another conversation to have. If we are going to have people advising us that are volunteers from the community, what kind of expertise should they have? And that's a different question.
I will say, as far as the funding strategy, I would actually not recommend that you try to put out a whole scope of work. I would actually, I would actually recommend you make a commitment to almost make this be a recurring article, and you allow yourself to adapt. And you don't, you don't necessarily ask for another half million or 750,000. You ask for what you, what you think you're going to realistically be able to do in the next year. And then you work, you work through contract amendments with.
Right.
Because to lay out this, I couldn't even advise you, I couldn't even advise you on how to lay out, how to even write an RFP for what MEPA is telling you you need to do. You might as well just start the project. I mean, why plan? They've told you, they've told you, you're not going to get a plan until you can tell them the number of trips per day. Just skip, skip the $2 million you're gonna pay for the plan and just start the project.
Well, and then, then that comes down to, maybe you just apply for a watershed permit and plan, take 20 years to plan it. I mean, and maybe that's the way it goes.
I think you need legal advice.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so for this particular agenda item, yes, we will have an item on the warrant for additional money for the CWMP work with that amount to be determined when we're better able to do so. Supplemental budget for wastewater treatment plant debt, Erica.
Hey, everyone. I just wanted to talk a minute about the supplemental budget for the wastewater treatment plan. There is currently a deficit balance in the wastewater treatment capital project article. The original amount of the state revolving fund loan authorized in connection with the treatment plant construction was reduced by $154,048 due to cost and eligibility. The project did come in under budget by $79,550.74, leaving a net deficit of $74,497.25. This article would permanently fund the deficit and will prevent this from being deducted from future pre-cash certifications or requirements to raise on the tax rate recap. At this time, I'm gonna recommend that this be funded from the premium from sale of bonds account. We have been accumulating the premiums from vans over the last few years, and we can use them for capital project purposes. Any questions?
Yes, could you repeat those numbers slower? I can't write that fast, Erica.
The construction loan was reduced by $154,048.
Came under budget.
The under budget was $79,000.
And then the project came in under budget by $79,000. And then, the project came in under budget by $79,550.74. So, the net deficit in the fund is the $74,497.25.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Any questions about this?
No, for the rest.
Yeah, sounds good. Like the plan. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Next, supplemental budget for Chiller and Bourne Middle School, school department. Jordan.
Poor Jordan.
Sorry.
It's past your bedtime, Jordan.
Good evening, everyone. Jordan Geis, Bourne Public Schools, Director of Business Services. This request is for additional funds to complete the Bourne Middle School Chiller replacement. You should have in your materials, the filed sub bids, the GC bids, as well as a quick snapshot of the budget versus bid for this project. Last year, the town appropriated $280,000 for the Chiller project, and we did get a pretty good response for the bids. We had five filed sub bids that came in. The low bid was about $18,500. The general contractor bids, we had seven responses, and the low bid was $298,650. We also have additional expenses, which is the project design oversight and bidding process. That contract is for $29,400. So, as a result, we are over budget by about $66,578,000. Given the GC bid alone, it's proved to carry a little bit of a contingency, about 29.8, a little less than 10%, making this additional request for a total of $95,000. Both the general contractor and the filed sub bidder have agreed to hold their bids past the deadline, pending further appropriation in May.
Great. Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Is what it is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jordan.
Next item, supplemental budget for share costs group health insurance. Erica.
Hello again. So, the next article on the agenda is for an operating budget amendment that's needed to meet budgetary requirements that have been identified since the last town meeting. This is directly related to increase in the Medicare costs in active employee plan enrollment. Changes to Medicare, our pocket maximums have shifted additional costs to the town supplemental plans for calendar 25, and active employee enrollment has increased by 26 family plans since our last projection. So, we are requesting $500,000 budget adjustment to share costs for health insurance specifically.
Okay. Any questions? Questions on Zoom? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Erica. Next is Erica. Transfer opioid settlement funds.
You're on a roll.
From previously voted article to special revenue.
Sure. Okay. So, like many other communities, Bourne receives settlement funds annually in connection with the opioid settlements. Originally, the laws required that these funds be treated as general fund revenue, and at the May 2023 town meeting, we voted to segregate these funds into a general fund free cash article. Since then, the Commonwealth has voted to change the laws to allow said funds to be placed into a special revenue fund, and the proceeds can be expended without further appropriation. This article simply transfers the balance that's in the general fund article to the special revenue fund, and this was also requested by the auditors for meeting the recording requirements.
Okay. And so, that means that what the money can then be spent by whoever's authorized to spend the money, whoever it is, without further appropriation by town meeting? All right. Any questions from the board?
No.
On Zoom, public. Okay. Sounds good. Is that it for special?
Yes.
So far, unless we could do things.
Yes, the special closes on Friday.
Okay.
The 28th.
The 28th.
Sorry.
That's Friday, next Friday.
Friday, the 28th.
Some Friday.
A Friday.
Yes, all right. All right. Item 12, discussion, library roof repairs.
You asked that this be put on the warrant.
Oh, I asked, yes, I asked because, well, when I followed up with Liz about the repairs for the drainage that happened, the.
Leak.
Facilities manager had some bucket truck or something that was going to go up and look at the roof. I just wanted to know what happened with those repairs. We didn't have a follow-up final, like what happened? Are there repairs being done? Were they done? Did they find more work that had to be done, like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all of the above. So, they did make adjustments. They sealed up more areas that were potential leaks. They sealed up around the cupola area as well as replaced a pane, a window pane that had been missing. So, they put plexiglass and added more sealant. However, from the storm this Sunday into yesterday, there was additional leaking that happened into the conference room. So, the funnel collection system is still there. It was put back in, and, and until, we have a, we have a bucket truck that is scheduled for next week, and they're going to go back up if weather permitting. Because there's a reason why there was such a long time between when it started and before the guys could get up there is because of the cold weather, the wind, the rain, the elements just were completely against us for, for almost three weeks. And right now, we're dealing with that still. So, but yes, they are going to go back up and do another sealing session as much as they can. So, that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And they're working on it.
They are diligent. They're, I'm texting them every morning when it rains. I'm like, get over there and take a look and see what's happening, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, it brings back memories of the police station.
Oh, yeah.
Before we got our new police station, whenever it rained, the detectives had to cover their computers with plastic because it was raining, and detectives weren't. Okay. Thank you for the update. Discussion MIPA certificate for CWMP. I think we've sort of already discussed that.
Yeah.
We might not discuss that anymore, right? Town administrator's report.
First, I'd like to remind everyone that the deadline for dog licenses is March 31st. If anyone has questions about how to license your dog, please contact the town clerk's office. The Cape Cod Commission has been working on the next update to the regional policy plan. This review offers a chance to assess the impact of the significant changes in the region over the last five years and ensure the Cape's unique challenges, such as housing, climate change, infrastructure, water quality, and economic sustainability, among others, are effectively addressed and reflected in the regional policies and goals. There will be an in-person meeting on March 26th and a virtual meeting on March 28th. Details for both meetings are on the Cape Cod Commission's website. Currently, the COVID era provisions of the open meeting law that allow us to hold fully remote or hybrid meetings are due to expire on March 31st. There is a bill pending in the Senate that is scheduled for discussion on Thursday to permanently authorize these meeting participation options. We are watching this closely, and I will keep the select board and town departments apprised of any changes as they develop. MassDOT will be advertising the median installation project on Scenic Highway later this month. Once a contract is awarded, the town departments will stay closely involved with the regular construction meeting schedule. It is anticipated that one westbound lane will be impacted in stage one only of the project. This lane restriction is scheduled to be overnight work from Sunday through Thursday nights. I will provide additional reports as we learn more details about the project. And lastly, by the end of February, ISWM has diverted 3.43 tons of food waste from the landfill thus far in 2025. Thank you.
Wow. It's only March 17th.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah, and that was at the end of February.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
As of February. Okay, thank you. Minutes of 3:42.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Ann Marie. Sorry, discussion. Scene done, it's a roll call. Jean?
Yes?
Melissa?
Yes.
Ann Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, 500. Committee reports.
Last week, Ann Marie and I concluded with the Strategic Planning Committee for the Bourne Public Schools. It was, it was a fun six months, went by fast, but they'll be going before the school committee in early April to bring their final report, subject to any edits, you know, that we get by email or anything at the last minute.
Right.
Also, I met, Maureen and I met with the Cape Bridges Group last week over at Mass Maritime, and we were updated on the more, on the updated Sagamore Bridge and Bourne Bridge replacement plans over what Stromy recommended through design phases. We were also told at that time that the property taken down in Sagamore looked like there'll be 12 residential and three commercial properties over in there. There will be a separate department within MassDOT to deal with the property takings that the property owners can work with, because the goal is to get, to get these people as high as fair market value as humanly possible. And, and they're going to try to work with them, and not just like convict them and get them out of there, but, you know, work with them as long as they can, you know, to, so the property owner can come up with their next steps, you know, if it's where they're going next. If they say they need another 30 days or so, 60 days, they're not going to fight it. You know, they're going to, and we, as a group, said that communication needs to be key with, with these families because it is emotional, it's a big, it's a big thing with them. So, between the state leadership with X and Zeros and Vieira, and with the, and with Senator Fernandez, and me on the town end, we just want to make sure that the communication is key going forward with these property takings, that, you know, we're dealing with people's lives here, and that we realize it's for the public good. But at the same time, communication needs to be paramount for all of this because there are people's lives who are affected through this, and, and some of these have been in four and five generations, and over 100 years with the Gallow family, for example. So, I think, I think you'll see Sagamore and the infrastructure around it, you know, continue through with the dates, with the dates that are being proposed. Bourne Bridge improvements, I don't know what's going to happen with, with the way things are these days, but at least we know Sagamore's there. And as, and as we were talking about the Bourne Bridge, one of the biggest things, initiatives within the Bourne Bridge issue is to relocate another the Upper Cape Tech entrance down the street and making that safer. And I asked if there's anywhere we can move the relocation, the relocation and replacement of the Upper Cape Tech driveway up into the Sagamore portion of it, because we don't know what's going to happen with the Bourne portion of it going forward. And because of the accidents and other safety concerns with students walking on Sandwich Road, and you have to have an officer down there in the morning and the afternoon, I thought it was big that we try to get the funding for that part of it moved up sooner than later, just for the safety of the staff and the students involved, you know, they're going in and out year round, and in the year round, because you have the Bourne Braves issue as.
Well, that's kind of an interesting point, because if they put that rotary in, the entrance in the rotary and took, would take care of that, where Sandwich Road comes out, where that goes down. I mean, if they did the Bourne Bridge rotor, I mean, they did that, the rotary, that would be a good improvement that if it, that they might want to talk about. We might want to talk about getting it on the chip or something.
We had a similar presentation at the similar meeting.
Yeah, Louisa was there. She seems very good.
Yeah, she talked about the eminent domain.
Yeah.
Takeover and how it was, it's, you know, they're not just throwing money. They're going to be very involved in.
Yeah. She seems like a very competent manager.
Yes, yeah.
Project manager.
Yeah, she becomes very highly respected.
Yes.
You know, with a MassDOT, and worked very closely with Tom here before Tom passed away. Tom spoke very highly of us, so we'll see what happens going forward. But, you know, between the state and federal elected delegation, as well as myself and Maureen, I mean, we've all fought for the, making sure that Bourne's interests aren't forgotten through all of this.
Okay. Correspondents?
I just wanted to give a little brief update.
Oh, sure.
For those that didn't attend, project architect and OPM reviewed documents uploaded to the town website, including project programs for footage analysis, conceptual site plans, conceptual floor plans, and preliminary estimates. The committee voted to upload budget and tax impacts to the town website, and those are up there now. The capital outlay committee did meet Monday morning and vote this. And, and the next meeting is on April 15th to 3th.
The next meeting at the Southside Fire Station?
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
April 15th?
April 15th.
Okay. But they are planning to bring to the select board on April 1st, right?
Yes, they're on, they're on the list for April 1st.
Yes.
Okay.
Correspondents. For March 18th, 2025, A, Talent Bank, J Wells Shore and Harvard Committee; B, Talent Bank, J Melvin Shore and Harvard Committee; C, Z Commo resignation letter from Recycling Committee; D, DEP letter, report for PFAS at Tampa, short flow oversight; E, DEP letter, demolition area one environmental monitoring report; F, Bowles Landing road concerns; G, letter to C-TAC regarding Xfinity Service; H, Heather Hill Road, application for abbreviated notice of resource area delineation; I, Travelers Club, National Register of Historic Places Acceptance; J, letter from Mass authorizing Chapter 90 funding for five years; K, email and draft letter from Sitech requesting Xfinity Annual Review; L, S Millie resignation as representative to Cape Cod Commission; and M, I Sally resignation from Shore and Harvard Committee.
Oh, thank you.
Can we have letters of, thank you?
I think there's a letter for Sally.
And for Steve?
Yeah.
They're both in there.
In there, okay. And item F, the issues with Bowles Landing Road, if we could see if we can get that on a future agenda item at some point. I definitely think that we need to look at improving the lighting down towards the fire station, so that's the Cassavirous Association at night, you know, it's a safety issue. And we may be able to fix it short term, quicker, sooner, sooner than later, if we can get those lights that are attached to the fire station in the front that go out towards Bowles Landing Road itself, see if they're bright enough so people can see. And then on the side, on the right-hand side, where there's a side parking lot, if there's a light there. if there's a light there that can project out into the side parking lot. And I'm sure for Cassavirwitz Association can maybe do something on, discuss it on year-round or across the street on that side. But I think because of the activity, the amount of activity over in that area, I think is where we're responsible.
Let's have an agenda item to talk about. Possibilities and then what might be possible, you know, the.
Options.
Options.
Yeah, so ASAP, or whatever we can, we fit it on it, but sooner the better.
Yeah. Next is future agenda items related to correspondence and other future agenda items. So I have like three things that I want to kind of talk to the board about. One is the building committee that we had talked about. We had one meeting about it, but I think we need a kind of a workshop meeting. And if we're going to have any projects going at town meeting that are going to go to that committee or said to go to that committee in the motions, which some of them say, we should do that sooner or later. The other is the C W M P discussion or some sort of workshop on C W M P. And the other is the social equity licenses, like when we're going to start talking about those community agreements for social equity licenses. There are some people that are interested in applying and are worried about carrying costs, and they'd like us to move forward. So I'd like to do that maybe in April. So, but I was thinking about maybe an hour on the 25th, maybe before the sewer commissioners meeting for talk about the building committee, 6 on the 25th.
Yeah.
I may be virtual.
I will not be here on the 25th.
Okay. Okay.
I will be virtual. I'll be in Boston late.
Well, maybe we'll find another day then. If you won't be here on the 25th, I think we need to have the town administrator talk about building committee, so. Maybe I'll send out a.
Is that something that has to go this town meeting? Is that what the?
Well, the building committee idea was that if we were going to have an ISWIM building committee, fire station building committee, police station roof building committee, and potentially a library building committee, that having four different building committees, we were trying to condense it.
I understand the concept behind it.
But, you know, if you're going to do all this funding at the town meeting and they're going to start moving forward, you know, what are we going to do?
Right.
I mean.
So last time this was discussed, it was mentioned that the discussion would be continued on April 1st. So.
Okay.
On page 85 in your packet, the discussion for the standing building committee is slated for April 1st. And the last time we discussed social equity, that was pinned to June 3rd. So both of those are.
Okay. The problem with April 1st is we have a lot on the agenda that night. I mean, the Southside Fire Station's supposed to come. I don't think we've heard anything from ISWIM Building Committee about their $25 million project. We have, so we have other things. And I'm thinking about that being sort of a separate meet, more of a workshop-y kind of meeting, unless the select board wants the policy subcommittee to kind of make a stab at, like, talk it through it and then bring it to a meeting. But I think it's really hard to talk about that kind of thing at a.
I thought that's, did we have that conversation about the social equity going to policy sub? And the building committee?
So.
I can't remember. I vaguely remember something to that effect.
No, both of those were, when they were discussed last time, they were identified for dates as shown on page 85. So that was the discussion, that was the discussion with the board last time around. Neither one of those were sent to policy subcommittee.
Okay.
As of yet.
Okay.
Just send the policy sub and then we can.
No, no, I mean, if you, it's fine. We can just leave it at April 1st. And we'll just, I mean, I'm just worried about April 1st being here. Not being able to adequately talk about the building committee at a regular meeting is a kind of a concern of mine.
I think that.
I think we do our homework.
Yeah, if we do our homework, we'll be all right.
Ready to go.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly have plenty of samples.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we just need to decide.
We'll do it.
You know, what the charge is. Is that the path moving forward and?
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay. We'll put those on. Social equity, I might want to revisit the June 3rd. I know we talked about doing June 3rd, but I think I'd like to have a meeting before then because if we start at June 3rd, it might be too late, so. But we'll see what we can work at. Okay. Anybody else have anything else besides the Barlow's Landing?
Does there need to be discussion about having the board discussing an annual meeting with Comcast?
Yeah, so that's another thing that we need to schedule. But that would be on a regular Tuesday night.
Correct.
These three things, the building committee, the social equity, and the C W M P. If I feel like trying to do them justice at a regular meeting when we're limited in the times that we're meeting is difficult. This Comcast, we need to invite him to come in and give a report.
Correct.
Right?
Oh, Michael Gallagher.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I'd prefer to wait till after we've done with town meeting warrants and stuff.
Oh, sure.
So March 31st is their three-year thing, I think, so. But we'll sort of try to figure out when we can invite him on a schedule. Yeah. Okay.
April 16th moderator meeting?
Okay. Uh, update on 829 Scenic Highway. Melissa, are you going to recuse?
I must, so I will hop off and I will see you all. Thanks, Jean.
Okay.
I'll see you then.
Moderator meeting, April 16th, 3:00 p.m.
With the letter that came from the attorney representing them, it looks like they have a new plan for that property?
So is this an update? Marlene, did you have something to update us on particularly here?
So there is a letter in your packet on page 87 from the applicant's attorney committing to revising this plan. And given these revisions and changes, the plans have not been developed yet, but given the intention of this letter, I have informally discussed this with the Cape Cod Commission staff. And with the project being reduced in scope, it would not.
Doesn't warrant.
It would not be taken as a D R I.
Okay.
So you recommend withdrawing it based on, we have to wait and see what's submitted first on any changes to it before we say we want to withdraw?
That's for the, that's really for the board to decide on, you know, does it, do you want to continue?
Well, did the Cape Cod Commission say that based on the revisions, it's no longer eligible for a D R I? Are they going to notify us this project is not eligible?
Well, it wasn't eligible to begin.
Okay.
It was never, it never.
It was a request on our part.
It was requested on your part. So it was not, it was not eligible under the mandatory thresholds to begin with.
So, yeah, I would make a motion that we withdraw the request for D R I to the Cape Cod Commission for 829 Scenic Highway.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I mean, it seems from what I've heard in the discussions where they did make that, reducing the size of it and talking about saving, setting aside property or whatever, that it seems to be have gotten, you know, going in the right direction. Okay. Any further discussion? Uh, Jean?
Yes?
Ann Marie?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, 4-0-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Jean?
Yes?
Ann Marie?
Yes.
MJ, yes, Peter? 4-0-0.